Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this afternoon's board meeting. The school board meeting of January 12th is now called to order. The time is six o'clock. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district vision, to be a world-class school system. This afternoon's agenda includes the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, two acknowledgements, public comment, consent items, which includes three items under executive services, 10 items under academic services, five items under business services, four items under human resources, one of which is good cause. Dr. Atkins, please provide an explanation for this item.
Yes, I will, Madam Chair. We just finished revisions on the employment contract for our staff attorney, Ms. Christine Schroed, term of one year, so we'll be bringing that forward to the board this evening for good cause.
Thank you. As president officer, I find there is good cause to add this one item to the agenda. One item under information systems, nine items under operations, and four items under other businesses. And before I ask for a motion to adopt the agenda, I want to ask Ms. Giavennelli, are you online? Ms. Fisher, are you online?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Thank you. Okay. Going forward, board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Ms. Vaughn. Please record your votes.
I'm having difficulty if there's somebody, some tech person, that could come help out here.
Ms. Vaughn, what would your vote be?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas, thank you.
That's what I'm getting.
Ms. Fisher, are you able to vote?
I'm having difficulty right now.
Okay, could you please say yes or no, please?
Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Giavennelli, are you here? And Ms. Gittens?
I voted.
You voted?
Yes.
So, I cannot see that. Ms. Thomas, is it?
It's not up there.
Six zero? Bless you.
Yes, it's six zero.
Okay. Six zero, motion carries. I will be leading us in a moment of silence, after which Ms. Morgan will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please, please rise. Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Character education word for January, commitment. Quote, "Building yourself to a course of action despite obstacles." The design you see displayed on our screens was created by Corinne Scrodato, a 10th grade student at North Fort Myers High, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Our resolutions for this month is we have the National School Choice Week, which is January 24th through the 30th, 2021, and Celebrate Literacy Week, January 25th through the 29th, 2021. At this time, we have public comments. Ms. DePree Bruno, please address this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School Board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a blue card, please put it in the basket provided in the back of the room. If you need a blue card, they are located in the hallway outside of the boardroom. The rules concerning public comment are posted in the back of the room. Public comment will be made from the central microphone in the back. Please be advised that the board does not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the board chair, Ms. Jordan, will address concerns or the assignment of any concerns or requests to the superintendent. Board Policy 1.181 is in effect and requires everyone to wear a mask when on school board property unless you have requested a reasonable accommodation. In addition, for the benefit of other speakers, we ask that you use the sanitization supplies, which are provided near the microphone, after you speak for the benefit of the next speaker. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on school district issues. Personal attacks on individuals or abusive language are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or display of temper are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20 speakers, two minutes if there are 30 speakers, and one minute if there are 31 speakers or more. Per the policy, the maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. We encourage you to address the board as a whole versus individual board members as they act as a collective body. Please state your name prior to making your comment. Two speakers at this time.
Thank you. Before we call on the blue cards, is there anyone on my left side that would like to speak that has not filled out a form yet? Please raise your hand. Is there anyone on the right side? Ms. Ware, if you're just, whenever you get up to speak is fine. Mr. Pre, Bruno, would you?
I don't know if there's anyone in the no-mask room as well that would like to speak. They're welcome to also provide a blue card. At this time, Madam Chair, we call Daniella Dai.
Happy New Year. Welcome back. Looking forward to a successful year. I know we wanted to go over a lot of items today. There are a ton of items on the agenda. I wanted to go over a few of them. The consent for the printing services, the cost of materials should be reduced because we have less students in the classroom, so we're taking the contract and we're going forward with the exact same amount, and it should be modified considering the printing is actually going to be less, not only this year, but for the year prior. We should be reviewing the budget for that. The First Amendment for rapid testing, we should put more information to advise when the board takes over. We know that it's when there's a reduction of funds, but what do we do? When is it that the board gets notified? When do they make the decision? What constitutes a change where the board or the superintendent is going to take over? We have a consent item for the migrant education program to reallocate funds for 180 students that have been identified when we have 60% of our students failing or below where there should be based off of our information from Dr. Savage's last presentation. So how are we going to differentiate from the students that are failing because they are migrants? Or how are we going to differentiate from the students that are failing because of the fact that we currently have an education system that is not working and has been advised that it is not working? We're selling a property or proposing to sell a property for $2,170,000. What are we going to do with those funds? What are they going for? How are we allocating them? And when is that going to be determined if we're going to determine that we are selling a property for that amount? We're selling or going into a contract to piggyback off of Mesa, Arizona, their lawn maintenance, ground maintenance, equipment parts, accessories, and supplies. Who's going to be doing the maintenance? Because currently, maintenance items are the number-one missing item that gets stolen, gone, we don't know where they go at the end of the year. It is always the maintenance items, and I don't know why Mesa, Arizona, is the one that we're going to copy because they're not the same terrain in any way, shape, or form. The other item is the threat assessment coordinator that's been proposed. A few sessions ago, we took into consideration the fact that we needed to review threats and hired the city's Cape Coral's sheriff, I believe it's Sheriff Nolan, to come in. So I don't know why we need another threat assessment coordinator because I thought that his position was to go ahead and assess the threats. This is going to be another job that almost seems like pre-crime if you read the job functions. I don't see how we can have our students have a functioning education when they're in a system that is going for that. We have another thing on here for operational efficiency and effectiveness, and just to let you know, the clock is not on there, so I don't know how much time I have. Somebody to fill out federal rates forms, and I don't know who's doing that now or why we need an increase or what it is that we need to do, but if we can actually just increase the efficiency because we have a lot of loopholes and things that we had to reallocate funds for to cover for funds that we didn't have when people weren't in those positions that they were supposed to be, I guess you could say. I think that's it for the day, but thank you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Dai. Ms. Perez, Jacqueline Perez.
I'm here to object to the present plan for the sterile building of the Cape through eight school on Three Oaks Parkway. I was listening to your afternoon meetings, and millions of dollars were spent in purchasing and preparing for the property on Williams Road. Not once over a period of two years did the Astero Council nor this school board attempt to stop that process at any point, and you spent millions of dollars doing that. And over a week, from April 22nd, 2020 of last year, till May 5th, I believe, you made a whole turnaround, which is going to cost the county millions of dollars. That property itself is practically all wetlands. The amount of fill that you are going to require is going to be enormous, and I don't believe that you are being as transparent as you should be. A lot of the objection I have to is that these types of schools with this part-like eschery and grandeur that are being built, you're going to have Benita Springs High School, number two, the most expensive school built for the least amount of students, and we're going to be repeating ourselves. But that seems to only happen in District Three, where Lehigh and Cape Coral and North Fort Myers is continuously abandoned, and these types of schools are not being built there, where you're going to accommodate, from what I heard this afternoon, the public with trails and other amenities that the county, the school district, and the taxpayers are going to pay for Astero County continuously. I don't think that's fair for other students and parents that live within Lee County School District. I'm also concerned about the displacement of the animals, the wildlife, and the destroyed wetlands. If you had stayed with your original plans, you would have been saving millions of dollars. The other issue I wanted to bring up is the roof. Last week, I spoke with one of your employees, and, well, about two weeks ago, and he had informed me that meetings had taken place between a vendor, two vendors, the superintendent, Brian Williams, and Holloway, about whose fault it was that the roof collapsed in Benita. And they did an investigation. They determined on June 24th of 2020 that that roof was a failure because of the vendor's inability to properly install a roof. Not once has any of you come forward to even speak about that. As a matter of fact, you have a board member on those emails who hasn't shared any of that information with you, and I find that a lack of transparency to the public and to yourself.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Ms. Jerry Ware?
Jerry Ware, as was stated. Welcome to the new year. With all of the pandemonium that is going on, I'm wondering how it's going to affect our kids. But this evening, my primary concern is to find out when, for those of us who reside in the primarily local Dunbar community, be better informed of what's going on with Franklin Park School. I know you know that I've been adamant about trying to find out what's going on. I know you don't want to respond to me this evening, but I'm asking for the possibility of you all arranging a Zoom meeting that will accommodate citizens of the Dunbar community. My other concern is what are you doing for those kids in that area that are failing? Thank you very much. I know I'm not going to get answers, not today, but I'm expecting some, please.
Thank you, Ms. Ware, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. Kieta Perez?
Today in 20th Circuit Court, Judge Fuller ruled against the school district in the court case of Brachi against, or versus the school district. There are 32 pages in the findings that state Florida statute violations of public records. So I was just going to read a few of the orders that occurred. So, the court declared that the district violated Public Records Act by eroding the plaintiff's and public's right to access to records, failing to promptly acknowledge the plaintiff's public records request in violation of Florida statutes, allowing the district's automated spam, anti-spam system to quarantine plaintiff's legitimate public records requests, unlawfully delaying plaintiff's public records request and failing to provide records within a reasonable time, failing to respond in good faith to the plaintiff's records request, failing to provide emails and Outlook calendars responsive to the plaintiff's records, request to electronic medium that allows the plaintiff to view the records in the same way the district is able to view them, and hereby enjoins the district to provide within 48 hours of all records responsive to plaintiff's records request to be made. I think that this is not only a win for the client and the attorney, but a win for the public. It's really important that the integrity of the public's right to public records request is upheld and ensure that the district is transparent and ethical in all of their actions as their actions directly affect children, parents, and other taxpayers in the county, especially as I'm familiar with other instances where members of the public have had trouble obtaining public records requests and are charged exorbitant fees for that. So, thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are no further comments.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Perez, the one who just left. I just wanted to, we do have a new system coming into place regarding, for public records, so I just wanted to let you know that. Ms. Ware, thank you for advocating for Franklin Park. I have conversations, as a District Four representative, I am continuously having conversations regarding Franklin Park. We actually had the city of Fort Myers, community members, the district, everyone wrote letters and sent them up to Tallahassee in favor of a complete teardown and rebuild. We are still waiting for their respond. I know I spoke with Ms. Eball last week, and she had spoke with someone up in Tallahassee, and we are still waiting for that because they, right now, they're, and Dr. Atkins, if I'm not on track, please correct me or any of the other staff, there is one building that they are requesting that they have not agreed to allow us to tear down at this point. So we would have to build around that. But we are definitely staying on top of that, and they know that I am staying on top of that. As far as the kids at Franklin Park, United Way, and our partners there at the school, they're doing a fabulous job making sure that the kids have everything that they need to succeed. They have a fabulous staff there, and they are working diligently to ensure that those children at that school are having everything that they need. And when we get further information, I will be more than happy to share that with you. So I just want you to know, we are on top of that, and we are constantly having meetings with Franklin Park, United Way, the state, everything that has to do with Franklin Park. So that's, we should hear something, hopefully, we're hoping to hear something within maybe the next, hopefully by the end of this month. I know we were hoping for the end of the year, and that did not happen, but it is the state that we are waiting for. I can definitely share with the community through community voice. I will send something there, or we can definitely come up with a way to have a Zoom or another public meeting. We had a public meeting there yesterday at Dunbar High, so we definitely want to make sure that the community is engaged and is aware of what is taking place.
We're still really just in a waiting mode for the state. We did get some feedback. I just learned today, and, you know, we're hoping, based on that feedback, to get more information next week. So we will certainly fit, share that with everyone once we receive it. We're all anxiously awaiting and hoping that we can get a full rebuild. We think that's going to be in the best interest of the school and the community.
Right. So that's where we're at right now, but we'll definitely make sure that it goes out. If I have to walk and knock on every door in the neighborhood, I will do so, but everybody will have the information.
We're known as 302 Park.
I know where you live. Yes, ma'am, I will be there. Ms., did you have something else to say? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. And I just lost my notes. Ms. Dai, thank you for coming, and you gave us a lot to speak about, and I'm so sorry because I wrote down what you were stating, and I can't find it. Okay, the rapid testing, we are, I'll just go through a couple of these really quick. Rapid testing, we spoke about that this week, and we're hoping that the county will continue to fund that. Again, Dr. Atkins, please... Again, Dr. Atkins, please jump in anytime you'd like. Um, so, and when that happens, that will, we will be sure to let you know because that'll be out there on the website. And if you would just send, maybe send me an email, or, um, Ms. Thomas at the board office, your other concerns, that way we can, um, respond to those. I'd appreciate that, because you had quite a few lists. Ms. Perez, thank you for coming. Um, and just think, we appreciate everybody who comes here to, um, to share with us. And we're going to move on. Okay, so the next item is the approval of the consent action items. The documents for the action items listed under the consent is made available to the board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all the materials, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance or appearing, of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business table items portion of the agenda? Ms. Giavennelli?
I have none.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
I have none. Ms. Gittens?
I have none.
Ms. Vons?
I have none.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
Ms. Fisher?
I have none.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda consent items?
I'll move.
Ms. Fisher? Moved by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Ms. Vaughn.
Madam Chair, I think I might be giving Attorney Dupree Bruno a, a little bit of a heart attack without making these motions properly. Is that true, Ms. Dupree, uh, Attorney Dupree Bruno?
Absolutely. You know that I don't like so moved, we want to restate the motion, so.
Thank you.
Just a reminder.
Ms. Fisher, could you please restate?
Yes, yes, ma'am. I move that we approve the consent action agenda. I'm going to do it.
Thank you.
I second it.
Thank you. Okay, please record your votes, and thank you, Ms. Patrica, for bringing that to my attention. Ms. Fisher and Ms. Giavennelli, are you able to, to vote?
I am.
Thank you. Okay, uh, seven, oh, it passes, motion carries. Okay. Dr. Atkins, please introduce any administrators in attendance with a new assignment that were approved under the consent agenda.
I will do. Thank you, Madam Chair. First, we have Trent Eckhart, Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle, from Assistant Principal to now Principal. Congratulations. Next is Kimberly Schmidt, from Tortuga Preserve Elementary, Dean, Student Discipline, to the Alva School Assistant Principal. And Clinton Garlic, Veterans Park Academy for the Arts, Assistant Principal to Pelican Elementary Principal. Congratulations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We will now recess the regular school board meeting at this time. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, good evening. As told at the Lee County School Board leasing corporation, I would like to call this meeting of January 12th, 2021 to order. The time is 6:28 PM. This evening's agenda includes public comment, two secretaries' recommendations, other business, and adjournment. Board members, do I hear a motion for adoption of the agenda?
Corporation meeting, as written.
And I second it.
Moved by Mrs. Gittens and seconded by Ms. Jordan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, like sign? Motion carrying seven zero. We will now take public comments. Mrs. Dupree Bruno, please address the agenda item of public comment.
At this time, the school board provides the opportunity for anyone who would like to make a public comment with regard to the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation. The rules are the same. We would ask that you refrain from any type of personal attacks or any type of hissing, booing, clapping, or unreasonably loud noises. Swearing will also not be allowed. At this time, I do not see anyone, Ms. Fisher, who is requesting a public comment for this particular meeting.
Thank you, Attorney Bruno. Is there anyone on the right section or the left section of the auditorium or the waiting room who would like to address the directors regarding any actions proposed to be taken by the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation?
Madam Chair, there is no one.
Can someone tell me if you see anything?
No, Ms. Fisher, there are none.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll now move to secretary's recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. We have two recommendations. First is approval to adopt the plan for student enrollment 2021, 2022 to comply with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes. Plan for student enrollment is reviewed and updated annually if necessary and presented to the board for adoption. Revisions to the plan were made to include recommendations by the PLC that support both students and the classroom. The effective date of this adoption shall be November 18th, 2020. The approval, second one, is approval to revise policy 4.35 Head Start Eligibility Recruitment.
I think we're reading the wrong thing.
Superintendent Atkins?
Leasing Corp.
Oh, sorry.
We are.
I'm doing the public hearings.
Yes. You jumped ahead of me. Uh, let's have your recommendations for the leasing corporation, please.
The approval of the minutes.
Okay, first recommendation is approval of the minutes for December 10th, 2019. That's the only one that I have.
September 10th, I think it was May 5th, 2020.
Second is approval of the resolution authorizing the issuance of certificates of participation, Series 2020A, to finance all or a portion of the cost of the construction and equipping of the new middle school MM to be located in Lehigh Acres, Florida, and authorizing execution of related documents in connection with the issue.
That's, that's where I have to.
It's my turn.
All right.
There you go.
I think you have the wrong script.
All right, I apologize. Okay, first recommendation is approval of the minutes from May 5th, 2020.
There you go.
All right. Second is approval of the organizational resolution of the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation for the election of officers.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, directors, you have heard the secretary's recommendations to approve the minutes of the last Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation meeting held on May 5th, 2020. I will now entertain a motion.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes. I move to approve the minutes of the May 5th, 2020 Leasing Corporation.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Is there a second?
I second.
Ms. Morgan?
Thank you. The secretary's recommendation has been moved by Betsy Vaughn and seconded by Kathleen Morgan. Is there any discussion?
No, there is not.
Thank you. I will now call to the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, like sign? Motion carries seven zero. You have also heard the secretary's recommendation to approve the organizational resolution of the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation for the election of officers. Nominated are Debbie Jordan for president, Betsy Vaughn for vice president, Gregory K. Atkins, secretary, and Amy V. Desmore, treasurer. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Somebody needs to. I move that we accept the slate for, of officers for the, uh, Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation of 2021 to 22, correct?
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Is there a second?
I second. Ms. Vaughn?
I second.
I second. The secretary's recommendation has been moved by Gwen Gittens and seconded by Betsy Vaughn. Is there any discussion? Any hands?
No.
No discussion.
I will now call to the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries seven zero. At this time, Ms. Jordan, I pass the presidency to you.
Thank you. We will now move to other business. Please note that the comments may only be made in our capacity as directors and/or officers of the corporation. Are there any comments, Ms. Giavennelli? Ms. Giavennelli?
I have none.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
Uh, just want to say that it was a pleasure to serve as president the past year, and I learned a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
I have none.
Ms. Vaughn?
I have none.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
Dr. Atkins?
I have none.
And I have none. At this point, having no other business to come before this board and seeing no objections, this meeting is adjourned. At this time, I will reconvene the regular school board meeting of January 12th, 2021. Public hearings. Uh, Dr. Atkins, please present your recommendations for this evening's public hearings items.
You can't just rewind the tape from earlier?
Yes, please. Rewind. We already heard it.
I apologize. Um, all right, so the first recommendation is approval to adopt the plan for student enrollment 2021, 2022 to comply with the changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes. The plan for student enrollment is reviewed and updated annually if necessary and presented to the board for adoption. Revisions to the plan were made to include recommendations by the PLC that support both students and the classroom. Effective date of this adoption shall be November 18th, 2020. Second recommendation is approval to revise policy 4.35 Head Start Eligibility Recruitment Selection and Enrollment. The purpose of the revision is to be in compliance with the new federal Head Start Performance Standards, 45 Code of Federal Regulations, Part 1305, uh, on eligibility, recruitment, and selection enrollment, and the criteria must be reviewed each year and amended if necessary. An eligibility committee comprised of head start and early head start parents, staff, and community, uh, review, excuse me, head start parents, staff, and community review the current criteria. The community assessment drives program decision and informs the work of the eligibility committee, which then determines whether the criteria needs amended. The effective date of this adoption shall be January 13th, 2021.
Okay, thank you. We will now recess the regular school board meeting and open the public hearing as indicated. The public hearing this evening is to consider approval to adopt the plan for student enrollment 2021 through 2022, approval to revise policy 4.35 Head Start Eligibility Recruitment Selection and Enrollment. At this time, a public will be invited to speak on these two items. The time allowed for comment is three minutes. Is there anyone on the right or left section who would like to address the board? Ms. Dai?
And if there's anyone in the back room as well?
Is there anyone in the back room as well? Okay, thank you.
Hey, again, I wanted to talk to you about the plan, um, to adopt the student enrollment calendar or the student enrollment item. I reviewed it last night, and everything is pretty good. You guys updated it pretty much the years and changed a little bit of the verbiage. There's a map in the back of it that has to do with the school districts, and that is not available online. Um, the one that's on there is from 2018 to 2019, so when this one gets approved, if you can put that one up to actually show which district your school is associated with. Um, there's also, um, proximity meetings for Lee County going on right now for student assignment, and I believe that's associated with this, so I don't know how, there's meetings going on today, tomorrow, and Thursday that will affect possibly what happens with this particular thing, the proximity meetings. Um, if that does change, will this be able to be revisited? Um, I know it says it's an ongoing process, but I don't know what the process would be to have it updated after it's been approved. So that was it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing none? Uh, I will close, I will now close this public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting of January 12th, 2021. Dr. Atkins, please restate your recommendations for this evening's public hearing items.
Okay, the first item is approval to adopt the plan for student enrollment 2021, 2022.
You have heard the superintendent's recommendations that the board approves to adopt the plan for student enrollment 2021 through 2022 to comply with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes. The plan for student enrollment is reviewed and up, updated annually if necessary and presented to the board for adoption. Revisions to the plan were made to include recommendations provided by the PLC that supported both students and the classroom. The effective date on this adoption shall be November 18th, 2020. Is there a motion for approval? And this is by hand. Those who approve, say aye.
You can, you can vote electronic, Madam Chair. I do believe you can vote through board docs.
I am so sorry?
I believe you can vote electronically.
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry, because I thought I was told that it was a hand vote.
For the, um, Lee Corping, for the lease corping.
Okay.
So it's your back to the regular meeting.
Thank you.
She has to state the motion.
Yes. So do I have a motion to approve? Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
I move to approve the adoption of the plan for student enrollment years 2021 and 2022.
Thank you. And seconded by? Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens? Any discussion?
Um, I, I would just like to make the comment that, um, Ms. Guy was talking about proximity and the timing with, uh, this enrollment plan, and to clarify and let me know if I'm wrong, but this is for 2020, 21, 22.
That is correct.
And the proximity plan will not start, start for elementary schools until after then.
Thank you.
Is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you. Uh, please, was there any other further discussion? If none, please record your vote. If none, please record your vote. Okay, seven zero, motion carries. Okay, Dr. Atkins, the approval to... I'm sorry, you already stated both of them. You have heard superintendent's recommendation that the board approve to revise policy 4.35 Head Start Eligibility, Recruitment, Selection, and Enrollment. The purpose of the revision is to be in compliance with the new federal Head Start Performance Standards, 45 Code of Federal Regulations, CFR Part 1305 on Eligibility, Recruitment, Selection, and Enrollment. The criteria must be reviewed each year and amended if necessary. An eligibility committee comprised of Head Start, early Head Start, parents, staff, and community review the current criterias. The community assessments drives programs decisions and informs the work of the eligibility committee, which can then determine whether the criteria needs amended. The effective date of this adoption shall be January 13th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the revised policy 4.35 Head Start Eligibility, Recruitment, Selection, and Enrollment.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Seconded by Ms. Vaughn. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please record your vote. Seven zero, motion carries. We are at board comments. Ms. Fisher, would you... Do you have any comments?
Just very briefly.
Please.
I just want to say a Happy New Year to all. And as we look back, I want to appreciate the service and transportation people for being there every minute of the time through this whole challenging last year. We have had help and support in place in our district and our schools. And I really want to appreciate all of our people for the work that they've done to keep us rolling forward and keeping academics at the forefront. They have gone above, above and beyond. And I want to thank everyone with wishes for health, happiness, and a much better year to come. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
Just a couple things. Happy New Year to everybody. Aren't you all excited for a new year? Aren't you all, you know, got your energy from holiday break and ready to hit it hard? I am. Couple things I wanted to talk about. K Kids is an organization. If you haven't all heard of them, please remember the organization. I'll try to remember. Shoot you a link. I talked to Dr. Atkins about making sure that our schools are aware of this organization. A brief update of what they provide. Housing, food, clothing, shoes, school supplies, haircuts, birthday gifts, Christmas gifts, computers, phones, cars, uniforms. You get the point. If a kid needs it, the principal, social worker, teacher can call K Kids, and they get it in a very short period of time. Kind of reminds me a little bit of the Bridge Fund without the paperwork. Tremendous organization that relies only on donations and really tremendous help to foster kids, at-risk children. I just recently became aware of the organization, and I wanted to make you all aware of it too, so that you can push it when you're out in the schools. I wanted to mention that Mike Welch out in Lehigh, through the Lehigh Chamber, has created an internship for a student at the Donna J. Beasley Technical Academy, so that that student will have hands-on experience in an office environment. And he was super excited to do that with the Chamber, and I think that's a fantastic opportunity for our student out there and just an example of the kinds of things we can do for our kids if we get more engaged with our chambers. Finally, the FSBA Equity Committee met last week. I want you all to know that I am attending every committee meeting for every FSBA committee across the board to learn more about what they do and prepare for next year. But in addition to that, I think I get some best practices to bring back here. And the big takeaway from that committee meeting was districts across the state, or some districts in the state, are adding equity and inclusion as an element of their strategic plan. And I know I brought that up at the table before, and I'd like us to consider doing that so that we're making sure that every decision we make, not just at the table, but at the staff level, every decision is viewed through the lens of equity and inclusion. Those are my comments. Thank you, and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
I have no comments.
Thank you. Ms. Javonelli? Mrs. Javonelli?
Yeah, I'm gonna make it brief because I get to echo.
Thank you.
Just real quick, I wanted to thank the speakers tonight, the Perez and the Dye, as we were speaking, because speakers earlier that came and spoke regarding the new school in the South Zone. The K Kids, I'm very familiar with that, that it is a great organization. Thank you for bringing that up this week. I've been donating to them for many years. Karen is a personal friend of mine. And I just want to say Happy New Year.
Is... Are you... Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Javonelli. Ms. Gittens, please.
Okay, first off, I have a tribute to do, and I'm sure you've seen all the people in the audience, so I'm going to read this. This is a tribute to a Lee County educator, Mr. Lemuel A. Teal Senior. And we have the picture up on the screen. "The months of January and February are very significant to people of my heritage. January, the world remembers Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s thoughts and words. In February, we remember our heritage and history-making contributions to our society. It is only fitting that tonight we remember a history-making, trailblazing, kind individual that has left a legacy of service to students, the school district, the community, and his family. Mr. Lemuel A. Teal Senior, 1938 to 2020." "They say the dash between the numbers of your life represent the life you lived. Mr. Teal's dash represents a life of education, where he was teaching in a classroom at Dunbar High School or teaching Sunday School class at Friendship Missionary Baptist Church, educating the local government on decisions important to our community or sharing a word of encouragement as he was a Lee County educator. I know that many of my colleagues and employees of Lee County schools have fond memories of how Mr. Teal influenced their lives. Some say they never appreciated math until they had Mr. Teal's class. Mr. Teal was a native of Fort Myers, graduated from Dunbar High School, earned a bachelor's degree from Allen University, where he became a life member of his beloved Kappa Alpha Psi." And that's who the gentleman are there in the red. "And a master's degree from Indiana University. He used his education and skill as a teacher in Lee County for 38 years. He returned to his alma mater, Dunbar High School, to teach math and help many adults earn their GED at Dunbar Night School. He then taught at Fort Myers Middle School until his retirement, during which time he led his math team to a first place with the Florida Engineering Math Counts Competition. Some of Mr. Teal's other educational accolades include Outstanding Middle School Teacher, Fort Myers Middle School Teacher of the Year in 1988, and in 1995, he received the acclaimed Golden Apple Teacher Award. Thank you to his wife, Ms. Suzie Teal, also a retired Lee County school teacher, two children, Tiffany and Lemuel. If you'll raise your hand, Lemuel. Let them know you're there. His extended family, which includes many, many educators and administrators, some that have worked with us and for us here in the district. Thank you to all of them for sharing him with the children and the community of Lee County. Thank you, Mr. Teal, for helping so many in Lee County. And as he would say, 'Welcome to Mathland.' And when you get the question right and you were correct, he would say, 'You're cooking with Crisco.'" So can we please just give a hand to those that came and for Mr. Teal? Thank you all so much for coming.
Ms. Gittens, could I give one...
Yes, please.
Just one example. Just an example of how his legacy in the school district of Lee County will continue on. Back a number of years ago, I thought I would be writing a book. I wanted to write a book about, you know, changing education, educational reform. And a person that I decided to interview actually was Mr. Carl Burnside. So I sat down with Mr. Burnside and just talked to him about his life in the Lee County School District, and his experiences and so forth, and what brought him to where he is today. So he told me, he said, "The educator that inspired him to not only be an educator, but to actually come back and serve his home community here in Lee County." Because we know Carl. Carl had the opportunity. He could go on anywhere he wanted. But the person who inspired him to come back here and teach and lead in Lee County was Mr. Teal. And so that's something that Carl passed on to me years ago that has just really stuck and just, I think, one shining example, if you think about the legacy of Mr. Burnside. But we can attribute a big chunk of that to Mr. Teal. And Carl's just one of probably thousands of lives that man has touched.
Exactly. How many are his students? Anyone that are his students, raise your hand. Look. Awesome, awesome. Let's give him one more hand. Thank you, awesome. The next thing, the next picture that I have. I happened to go to Mirror Lakes to deliver something to a little girl the other day. And as I was standing in the hall waiting for the other young lady to come, this lady, little lady, Ms. Jordan, came running in with her teacher, Ms. Grisham. And I will read what happened. The principal said, "Friday, when you were at Mirror Lakes, you met a lovely young lady named Jordan. You took a picture of her that she talked to you about." And here's what she was telling me. "How much she has changed and her life has changed since she's been at Mirror Lakes this year. 'At my old school, we didn't have a person like Ms. Wiley,' she said, 'who called and spoke to me like she does. I feel safe, cared for. My grades are really improved, and my teacher is super awesome. I love Ms. Grisham. The students here are so nice. I'm now reading 170 words per minute, and I have all As and Bs. My behavior has improved so much. I give Ms. Bubick, even though we aren't supposed to, a hug, even though we aren't supposed to, because I think it nice to do, and it makes her happy too.'" She is one of the many superstars at Mirror Lakes, and they said, "Thank you for recognizing her." I wanted to remind everyone that in this pandemic time, many, many of our schools, in fact, all of them are doing virtual open houses. And they're getting very, very creative with it. There are some that have digital, virtual tours. And I suggest you go online and look at some. I looked at the one for Hans Marsh Middle, and it's like, you know, a fabulous movie. And you see every nook and cranny and corner in the school. So I, heads off to all of the teachers and administrators that are working so hard during this pandemic time that is very different and very difficult, but they're making it happen. And finally, we talked in briefings and in our workshop about the proximity piece. And one of the things that stuck in my mind was a statement that Mr. David Katz made when he was talking about proximity. And I would, it would, I would suggest that many of you go back and watch our briefing today because we did talk a lot about proximity, and it will answer a lot of the questions that you have as well. There are, there was an event last night. There's one tonight in the Cape. One tomorrow in Three Oaks in Astero. And then Varsity Lakes is on Thursday night. But one of the things that stuck in my mind was what Mr. Katz said. "We're very early in the process. While there is still time for stakeholder input and change." And that stuck in my mind because I think we need to make sure we look at that equity and inclusion across the board and across the district. And when we have questions like, "Who made the decision to build a middle school without community input? To name a school without community input? To renovate another school and change the plans without community input?" As Mr. Davis said, "Early in the process, we have time for input and change." And I am just asking the superintendent, the board members and all to keep in mind that equity and inclusion for all members of the district. There are parents that don't even know that they can come to a meeting and say, "Well, why is this happening here?" Or that they can give a suggestion about how we're going to do something. They don't even know that they have the voice to do it. So we need to do, as an education organization, we need to educate all the stakeholders and all of our community that they do have a voice in what we are doing with all of the children in the district. And with that, I say thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Vaughn?
Well, since Ms. Gittens was just ahead of me and talked about proximity. Wait a minute. Cross that off my list. But seriously, the meetings are very important. If you can't go to the meetings, please, all of you, and you don't have to have children in the district. I know we have some very involved community members. And just take a look at the maps, and there's place for public input. I am the liaison to the EDAC Committee, and I think it was in December, it might have been in our November meeting. It's before Christmas, anyway. There was a recommendation, actually, I think it was October. Boy, time flies. To have some education and training for the school board members on inclusion and diversity, specifically on LGBTQ education. And so I'm excited for all of us that we're going to have that training on January 22nd. It'll be an all-day training, and certainly all of us will have some new things to learn. And finally, I want to echo what, in part, what my fellow board members have said. Happy New Year, except in my own personal mind, the New Year starts in eight days. Thank you.
Okay, that was good. I would just say, thank you, Ms. Gittens, for sharing this information about Mr. Teal. I thought that was excellent. Thank you so much for doing that. And I do want to say Happy New Years as well. I'm looking forward to this year and, you know, being the best that we can possibly be. Congratulations to our new administration in their new roles. And as well, I have been sitting on the FSBA meeting... And as well, I have been sitting on the FSBA meetings as well with the Equity and Diversity, which I sit on that committee, as well as the Legislative Committee. And I have been visiting with our new appointed legislators, and I have a couple more too that I will be meeting with to share information about who we are as a district and the issues that we have before us. And let's see, what else? And that, I swear on, you'll love this, James Stevens will be opening their pre-K. There is open house coming up for that as well. So we are definitely trying to be out in the community and, and these proximity meetings that Ms. Gittens and others have spoken about, we are trying to make sure that we disseminate that information however we can to get the most people there, whether it's through the churches and different community members. We are definitely trying to reach everybody so that that information is being out there and being disseminated. And that is one of our goals, is to make sure that we have, that we can reach out to those people, no matter what we're doing, so they have the information. And that's all that I have to say this evening. Ms. DePree Bruno, do you have any comments?
Just one clarification, on January twenty-second, there will be a training. This is a training for the board. There will be no decisions, no discussions or anything like that. This is simply a training and it's about diversity. There's two parts to it. On February eighth will be the workshop that will address LGBTQ issues, and of course, that is open to the public. And I have no further questions or comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. DePree Bruno, for that correction, clarification. Dr. Atkins?
Just, just a couple things. First of all, I thank you for the approval of Ms. Christine Schroed's contract this evening, so I think, I can't believe it's been one year, so, and here we are with a renewal, but I think I'm good, looking forward to the workshop that we're going to have in this particular area. I think that as you get to know our legal team, you will be very impressed with their talents. She certainly brings a huge array of experience to the table from her previous experience up in Illinois, so we, we're just fortunate to have her, so thank you for that. Also, just wanted to remind everybody that, that on January eighteenth, we're talking about Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., some events, because now, you know, life has changed in this virtual environment. However, want to remind people that twenty twenty-one Dr. Martin Luther King Unity Breakfast will be held virtually this year, so encourage you to attend. That's something that, that our board usually participates in. And then following that, you have the twenty twenty-one, instead of the MLK Walk, it will be the MLK Talk. So there'll be a, a online virtual discussion through, via Zoom, from ten-thirty until noon. So we'll make sure that gets out there, but receive that and wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that, and encourage you to participate in at least one of those events, if not both. And that is all for my comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next scheduled meetings of the board, on Monday, January twenty-fifth, there is, there will be a school board workshop at nine AM and at one PM. On Tuesday, January twenty-sixth, there will be a briefing meeting at one PM and an action meeting at six PM. At this point, having no other business to come before this board and see, and no objections, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you and have a great evening.